Now I want you to observe yourself and ask, how are you pacing your breath? Your energy? How do you look being that successful in the future? As you imagine yourself being all that you can be? How's your energy like? And then lastly, as you're observing who you are and who you want to be in the future, just observe what is motivating you to succeed? There has to be something that's motivating you to visualize this level of success that you're looking at right now. What's motivating you? So as you observe your future self, I want you young people, parents, to always remember, how am I reacting? How am I pacing my energy, my rhythm, my breath? And what motivates me to succeed? Okay, you can open your eyes now. Visualization is one of the most important things you can do. It's one of the biggest tools out there when you're trying to change your mindset. And that's why we brought the NFL here today, to help you change your mindset. Some of you guys want to be great, some of you young ladies want to be great. That's exactly what we want too. Now, let's get down to business. Now that we've warmed our minds up, I want to talk about a wonderful, wonderful person who had a vision to put this entire program together. And this person is of high honor and high stature. She's mentored kids all over the city. She gives her time in a number of ways in hospitals across the city. And I'm talking about Judge Lori Chambers Gray. And Judge Gray is not just some typical judge or jurist. She is a person who wants to give back, who cares about you. And we've done these red zone programs across the city. And it's because she cares. It's because she wants to bring young people together so they won't enter the red zone. She cares about stopping recidivism, which means a recycling of individuals being in and out of jail, in and out of jail. And when I first met Judge Gray, I was actually astounded at her level of professionalism, her level of care about individuals. And that's when this whole thing was birthed. Jason, John, we want to tackle crime in the red zone. We want to get out in the community and see if we can offer words of encouragement to our young people. But who does that? Now, if you do break through the red zone, and this is our defense, if you break through the red zone and we can't stop you, and you end up, you know, scoring a touchdown, it's not really a touchdown. It's really a chance to go see Judge Gray in the courtroom. And when you get there, she has to, she has to go by the law. She has to apply the law to whatever it is that you've done. So we thought that we'd best get out in the community and tackle crime right now. And this is not the only program that she has. She has another program called The Next Chapter, where she takes reading and mental performance into the facilities where young people like you are, we've seen them, where young adults, just as involved individuals where they are, wishing that they had not made that decision. And we teach them tools, mental performance tools. We teach them about emotional control. We teach them confidence in the power of self-awareness. If you are not self-aware about who you are, in the situation that you may find yourself in, then you may have problems. But we need people like you to help grow these type programs. We need champions that are aligned with stopping crime, with doing the right thing. And I think we have a group that can do that here. So without any further ado, I want you guys to put your hands together for the honorable Judge Lori Chambers Gray.
Good morning, good morning. Thank you so much, Jason. I want everybody to stand up for a minute, just stand up and let's sort of get warmed up here today because we are going to be interacting this morning. So just look to your left and look to your right and say hello to someone that who is here. You are looking at champions in the room. You are looking at champions in the room. And can you believe, can you believe it? Right here in this room, there is so much power. We have members from the NFL. Let's give it up for us. Not only that, we have brought you entrepreneurs who are running successful business here in this county. And I want to give it up for our business owners and those who were in the back and those who will talk to you today. All right, let's have a seat. Before I start, and I'm only going to be brief because we are going to pack a lot into your morning. I want to acknowledge elected officials who are here, candidates, judges who are in this room. I want them to please stand and tell us your name and where you've come from to talk to us and be with us this morning.
I probably don't need that. My name is Judge Ashley Mays-Geis. I'm the presiding judge of Harris County Criminal Court at Law Number 12. And I am excited about this event. I am excited about jumping in to talk to all of you. And I'm excited about all of you who took time today to come and learn and make a difference.
I can't hear you. How you feeling? See, I'm super good and getting better. How, when somebody asks you, how you feeling, saying, I'm feeling good in the skin I'm in. That's the only skin you got. I'm Charlotte Cooper. I am from a city in Louisiana. That's New Landau, Louisiana. I'm currently a retired councilwoman. God bless me to have six uninterrupted, I'm sorry, that's my ADHD, six uninterrupted terms. That's a blessing, a blessing. I retired as an educator with 49 years in service. Seventy-seven years old, still moving, a blessing. God bless me, and this is for the children, I'm sorry. Real quick, I'm gonna sit down because I know I take too long. The blessing is, God let me leave Portsmouth, Virginia, an only child born in 1948. I'm a dinosaur, okay? Now seventy-seven, still moving. You got to move with what God gives you. We go left, right, north, south, east, west. Met a military guy after two years in college. God bless me to marry this guy, took me to Okinawa, Japan, lived there three years, back to Fort Polk twice, went back to, went to Europe. My daughter, who's there 42 years old, she lives in Alabama. I live with my son down in Rose Sharon after I had a little bowel illness. But I love children. And she was born in Europe, but I had heaven in the Netherlands. So you get that. And then we're back to Fort Polk. Now I retire, but I'm here to help children. If you need me, I'm here. God bless you. I'm always ready.
All right, I'm gonna talk to you for 10 minutes and then we're gonna turn it over to the discussion with the NFL and our entrepreneurs here today. Who are we and why are we here? Those are the questions I want you to think about. And I appreciate the silence because in it, it tells me that you're thinking. Who are we? We are here from your community. We are lawyers. We are professional athletes. We are entrepreneurs who are running businesses. We are your neighbors. We are your friends. We are your pastors. We are your relatives. We are your church. It's so important for us to understand who we are so that we can know where we are going. Why do we call it a red zone? If you're like me and you are watching YouTube or the news, you will hear that there is crime in our community. There's crime in our community. There's a lot of great things in our community, but there's crime in our community. And it's interesting how everybody tends to point and say, well, this is the problem, this is the problem, this is the problem. But those three fingers coming back are also pointing at me. I'm the problem. You see, when I point at someone else and these three fingers are pointing back at me, it tells me that I'm the problem too. And if I'm going to point, I need to present solutions. And so that's who we are. We have a big problem, Houston. We've heard that before, Houston, we have a problem. But today, I am going to assure you that we have a solution. And it lies in all of what you hear today and walk away with. I want you to think about this day, August 2nd, 2025, Houston. What was I doing? This is that moment when you are going to meet greatness, find your purpose, and become the solution. Because as big as this problem is, we have brought people, not to brag to you about, not to showcase and highlight, we have brought people with proven, tracked records. And when I tell you a little bit about some of the work that I've been doing, I'm not bragging. I'm just telling you from a point of, please listen, because today I can talk to you without my robe. But on Monday, I'm gonna put that robe back on again. And I'm going to sit in my bench and I am going to hear from all walks of life. And this conversation will be over. Because when you land in the 262nd Criminal District Court, where I sit every day for the last almost seven years, you're facing from six months in prison all the way to the death penalty. That's what you're looking at. And all the hope and all the dreams and all the desires and all the family and all the tears, that's over with. Because at that point, it's the consequences of your actions that are being judged. And so today, we're going to talk about how you will not land in that courtroom. And then if some godforsaken reason you do land up there, how to make it a shortstop and a way out. That's what we are about today. So you were born with a purpose. Some people spend their whole lives, they spend thousands of dollars, they never get a room like this where there's millions of dollars right here in this room and you're gonna talk to them and photograph with them today. But they live their whole lives and they never understand that they were born with a purpose. You have one. Now how do you get there? You have to understand that life is a game of inches. Every inch and decision that you make has a consequence. Whether you skip class or go to school. Whether you decide to hang with a crew and commit crimes or hang with your buddies in the library and create artificial intelligence, cures to medicine, speeches that land you in Hollywood. Every decision either takes you closer to your goal or further away from it. And so after presiding, I asked the question of our district court, how much work did I do? They sent a computer-generated sheet. It said, you, Judge Gray, have presided over 102,230 hearings since you were elected in 2019. You have disposed 11,646 cases as of April 15th, 2025. And I will submit to you, before I landed on that bench, I spent 28 years defending people all over this country before I took the bench. So what I tell you today, I want you to know that it's coming from my heart. But it's not only from my heart, it's coming from my experience. And what we are sharing are secrets to some, but will be your secret to success after today. Now, every day, I see people who come to that court who had potential and somehow they lost it. Sometimes they look surprised when they learn that the range of punishment is not less than five years, not more than 99 years in the Texas Department of Criminal Justice, see, I can say that right off the top of my head, and fines of up to $10,000. That's what you're facing. And when you come to me in that moment, all of what you hoped for is too late. It's too late. Because the law is going to require me to follow the law. And that's what I swore to uphold and do. And I am going to do that. But what I have found out is if a person has hope and a plan, they never come downtown to Harris County because they're too busy doing what? Working their hopes, their dreams, and their plans. And so that's what you're going to walk away with today. You need a game plan. And that's what we will give you in these very nice brochures that you'll get. You'll take those out and you will have marking this day, your game plan. You need a strategy. You need to set goals. And you need to understand that every inch you take will bring you either closer or further from your goal. So three steps that I want you to walk away with today. Have a dream. Visualize, who do you want to be? Write a game plan. Set goals that align with your game plan. And thirdly, avoid the penalties because the penalties will take you out of the game and you'll come before people like me out of the game. And that shortcut will only shorten your game and your life. And so in addition to the NFL, the next person I'm going to introduce to you is an amazing person. How many people in this room are of the age of 14? Do we have anyone 14? 14? Well, our moderator today was accepted into college at 14. Anybody on your way to college at 14? I never met one until I met this individual. Anyone in the room today? 19, okay? Our moderator today graduated from Rice University with a bioengineering degree at 19 and became the youngest licensed attorney in this entire state of Texas after he graduated from Harvard Law School at age 22? Anybody in here 22? I remember what I was doing at 22 and I had not been licensed to practice law at that time. He is currently an attorney and also a vice provost of academic affairs and strategic initiatives at Rice University. He's written books. He has spoken all across this country. He has a passion for you. He understands you. That's who he is. He is one of our finest examples of what you can and are doing in our community. And so listen up because you're going to hear from greatness and I'm gonna turn it over now to none other than the honorable Dr. Courtland Wycliffe. Let's give it up for Courtland.
All right. Good morning. I thought this was the day that the Lord had made and I thought we were supposed to rejoice and be glad in it. I said, "Good morning." Before we start, and I'm gonna introduce the panel, I need one young person to volunteer for exercise with me. First hand, I see. Anybody? I see him over here. Well, I saw him first, my bad. So I get introduced by my accolades and so a lot of people think that, you know, I came out the womb with some degrees and it's, but that's not how it was. Oh yeah, just, I got you. So when I was younger, I was still pretty solid. I felt like I was pretty good. I think a good representation of how I felt about myself is this $20 bill. Now, let me ask, you being admissions at a major university, do you want this $20 bill? Yeah, okay, sure, you, you, yes, not a trick question, I promise you. But the problem is this is too pristine. This is like fresh out the bank. And I didn't come with no scars. See, my dad died when I was 10 years old. There was a period of time we had to look up to find the poverty line. Young and black in a lot of predominantly white spaces get bullied, get beat up. I mean, I threw hands too, don't get it twisted. But I continuously had what felt like a lot of pressure on me and a lot of things happening to me and a lot of trials and tribulations. And let me ask, with all of that that just happened to this $20 bill, did it become less valuable? Do you still want it? Okay, well, thank you for admitting me into your university. Use this as a bookmark for my book. Thank you. That was a demonstration. Thank you so much. I, oh, you can head down. I do that exercise to illustrate a point. It doesn't matter what happens to you, it doesn't change what's in you. Your trials and tribulations don't change your trajectory and it doesn't change the purpose that God has on your life. And what you're gonna hear with this panel is, these are some very successful men who have accomplished a lot of things in their life, but it wasn't without its trials and tribulations. And no matter what happened to them, no matter the circumstances that existed around them, they were able to persevere and achieve because it doesn't matter how difficult the journey is, sometimes that's just a test for your testimony. And so I'm gonna go ahead and I want to introduce the panel. So let me make sure. All right, so starting immediately to my left, we have Mr. Fred Dean, offensive tackle and guard for the Washington Redskins and for the Bears and a former Super Bowl champion. We have Reverend Melvin Baker, wide receiver for Miami Dolphins and the Houston Oilers. We have Vernon Dean, defensive back for the Washington Redskins and two-time Super Bowl We have Matthew Teague, defensive end for the Dallas Cowboys and the Falcons. We have Ricky Sanders with, our wide receiver with the Washington Redskins and Super Bowl Oh, my bad, two-time Super Bowl champion. We have Michael Moore, business owner. Go ahead, wave to the crowd. Yeah. And then we have Bubba McDowell, strong safety for the Oilers and the Panthers. We have Brother Ed Davis, a former federal detention officer. And last but certainly not least, we have Brother Richmond Webb with the Miami Dolphins. And I believe defensive end, offensive tackle, offensive back, my bad. Yeah. So since we, I like to start off these panel discussions by talking a little bit about these positions. And one of my favorite go-to people actually is Brother Webb. So we're gonna start on that end of the panel. And as somebody who is an offensive lineman, you get hit on every play. They're the only offensive position that's guaranteed regardless of whether it's a run or a pass play, they get hit. And in life, you got hit quite a bit, but you always stood back up and kept moving forward. Can you talk to these young people a little bit about what it takes to have that type of perseverance?
Well, one, I commend you for being at this church because I think that was my foundation. My parents raised me in church and, you know, you're gonna have trials and tribulations in life. And that was one thing I learned in the church and growing up and, you know, being a believer in God and stuff like that. So the first thing, y'all made the right decision by just being here today and being in church. But I think it's just other people, you know, teachers, my coaches and everything, people pouring into me and just showing that, hey, you can do this. And a lot of times, you know, most people look at the finished product, but when I first started playing football, they probably say, this kid ain't got nothing. But it took people believing in me and saying, you can do this, and reinforcing it on a daily basis. And then with my parents saying, hey, you can play sports, but you gotta, you gotta keep your grades up and get an education. So my parents, church, my teachers, coaches, it took a, it took a village. And that's why I attribute a lot of my success to today.
And then Brother Dean, same question. You also were on the offensive line, getting hit on every play and had some difficulties in life. What did it take to persevere?
Getting up. When you get, when you get hit every play, you gotta get up and go to the next play. And that's a good thing about football. It taught me to get up on every play. Everything I wanted to do in life, you know, football taught me. So I look at these young folks out here today. Y'all can do whatever you want to do if you put your mind to it. That's all it takes, all right? Stay away from problems. My mother taught me, you see it, you run, you go the other way. That's what I did. I went the other way. I wasn't gonna get caught up because you wanted to do something. No, I knew that was wrong. Everybody know right from wrong in here. Everybody knows it. And you know what to do. You see something, you go the other way. Don't be a part of it. And that's a thing in life that you got to learn, you know?
And so, I've had the pleasure of moderating multiple panels and being able to hear from Matthew Teague on the journey he took as being somebody who, you didn't necessarily start out with the aspiration of being a professional football player. You just were trying to keep people off of you and keep people from attacking you, bullying you. And I know you came up in a circumstance where that was a real thing you had to worry about. And some of these young people are going through that as well. So, can you talk a little bit about being or what it takes to have that perseverance despite having outward attacks constantly being levied against you?
Good morning, family. It's difficult to give the backside of what you should do when you're going through things. One of my support systems, even though it was dysfunctional, was still my family. You know, my mom, she required that I do what she said to do. And I didn't understand it at the time, but I do understand now that she had gone through some things that I had, that I was going through. And she could help me with her experience. A lot of youngsters nowadays ask why. Now, I suggest that you stop asking why and just do what your parents are telling you to do. Now, my, my, thank you. My, my mom, you know, she, she, she required of me. And so did other people at school and in the church. And she made me go to church all the time. I hated it because she made me go to church all the time. And, and she would stay around and talk to people all day long. And I couldn't say anything. She did, it wasn't the time that you talked back. But what my mom did was she was an example of a parent who was a disciplinarian. Now, some people shy away from that word because they think that means being abusive. It doesn't. Parents, those of you who this is going to stick to, you know, just receive it. We gotta do better because our kids don't know better. And we've got to guide them and teach them and require that they do what's going to be beneficial to them down the road. They're going to do what feels good. So gentle parenting, if you're fortunate enough to have a child that you can gently parent, you're doing well. Gently parent that child. But if your child requires more, you as a parent should give them more so that they have an opportunity to be successful in life. But, you know, for you youngsters that are not really small, look, practice this mindset. When somebody thinks that you're not going to be successful as something positive, something positive, prove to yourself that you can be successful. Not to them, but internalize that. And in spite of what people think about you, work to be successful anyway. Okay? That's, I'm going to get long-winded, so I'll stop there.
So, Reverend Baker, we've heard faith being brought up numerous times in the context of this conversation, and I wanted to throw it to you. How is it that what we read in the Bible can be applied and is it applicable, I should say, to actually being successful in something like football or business or just the real world in general? Or is it some, you know, old lessons that don't apply anymore?
It's still morning, so good morning. God be the glory. As a kid growing up, my mom was a praying mom. It was nine of us. My dad died when I was five. So mom had to work to take care of five children and to take care of a house. Mama said this. She said, "I want such and such did before I get home." The baby girl was, she's a baby, she's a baby. It's nine of us. I'm the baby boy. And we understand when she say, "I want this done and that done before I get home." It wasn't if, ands, and buts. It wasn't no, "I'm going to play until..." She'd get off at five. "I'm going to play until 10 till five and then do," she'd say, "do." Because she might get home before five, and she wanted it did. And the discipline come at that time. Being a receiver, you have to know the pattern, to run the pattern the quarterback called. He learned to call split left, flank right, 38 dive. Now, 38 dive is a running play. But then if he say split left, flank right, five, five zero, and he called my number, he said, "83, run a Z up." That's a Z up, a Z pattern. So mama say, "Do what you're supposed to do here." Now, if you don't run the right pattern, you ain't going, Don Shula ain't going to let you do this no more. That's just like at the house. We know what we're supposed to do when we at the house. We know what we're supposed to do as kids coming up. It's not nobody in here. My, my, my grandbaby is a special need baby. She's special need. You have to excuse me when I get excited and get up about talking about special need. I had a brother that was special need. Ain't nobody in here special need. I'm looking. This young man right here might be special need. You're not special need, are you? Talk to me.
Let's not call out any...
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying. If you are special need and you need something to be done, then you do get that. But if you're not, you do what you need to do. Because the prison and these homes are full of kids. They're full of people of our color, and they don't care about us going there. They love to have you there. So my thing is, we all up here saying what we're supposed to do. We all have been through trouble, and now one up here having been in some trouble. Now, when I was a little boy, when I was coming up, I got shot in college. And I can't walk through a metal detector now. At six years old, I was in a car wreck, and the glass shattered, and I had delicate surgery on my eyes and couldn't see for about three years. But I know a God. I know a God. I know a God that all things are possible when you trust in God. And I know we have some praying mamas in here and some praying daddies. And everything is possible when you put your faith and your trust in God.
So, part of that was talking about putting trust in God. But I want to take it over to Bubba over on the end. Do, when you are a safety, you are the last line of defense, and it requires you to have the qualities that your teammates can trust you to make the play because if you don't make the play, the opposition scores. And I, I find that that's a position that requires integrity. And then you, you've been a coach for many years, and you've instilled that integrity in others. Can you tell the young people a little bit about the qualities that build trust? Because I know that they need to build trust with their parents and their teachers to be successful.
Absolutely. Hi, everybody. Hope everybody's having a good time out here. You know, one of the things that I always go by, you know, playing, having coached, you know, at Prairie View for 13 years at Texas Southern, U of H, again, been around, taught, seen some of the discipline, undiscipline that portrays out there on the football field. And you guys got to understand, I always tell my kids, the things you do on that football field, whether you trust in that guy in front of you or beside you, is the one that's going to help you be successful, be it for that day, for that moment, or a lifetime. I've always told my guys, when I had the opportunity to become the head coach at Prairie View the last three years, one of the things, PV? Do you know? So one of the things I always told these guys, I said, "You got to trust one another." And again, not everybody has that spiritual guidance right now, but it's something that I wanted to as a coach. And I, I, when I had a chance to get that opportunity, I said, "You know, God, you know, what am I going to do with this opportunity? Am I going to just continue to teach these young men how to play football? Or I'm going to teach them more than just how to play football? Am I going to teach them more about life itself outside of football?" And at least from this point about, I've always said to these young men and women, you know, even at Prairie View, when we used to do FCA over there when I was there, "Guys, ladies, gentlemen, everybody, you know, Judge Gray talked about it earlier when she jumped up there and she was talking about all her accolades, what she has done. She had a vision, right? She talked about that. She was disciplined enough to carry out that vision daily. That's why she's successful in what she's, in what she has done and still doing to this day. And it's you. There are going to be doctors, lawyers, athletes. And people, let me tell you, you got to first trust God. Put that, put that in your, put that in your, in your heart right now. You got to, you got to put Him first because if you don't, again, it's not going to happen. You have got to treat others how you want to be treated. And it starts at the home. All right? That's the first thing I tell my guys. Treat others how you want to be treated. You treat them bad, they're going to treat you bad. You treat them good, they're going to treat you good. And you treat them good, even though you may not get the same reciprocation from that person, that doesn't mean that you, you have failed. You just haven't hit, you haven't touched them yet. But trust me, it will. And I'm going to give you a quick story. So when I got the job at PV, you know, I'm like, okay, you know, God, how do I reach these young men? Not, not just in the football realm, just outside of football. So we should pray before and after practice every day. So I wanted to do something a little different. I said, "You know what, God, put it on my heart, talk to me." And it was probably about two weeks later, you know, God said, "You know what? Just do it." And I said, "Do what?" You know, he said, "Let them pray." So if you praying at the end and before, let somebody else do it. So I asked somebody, you know, I said, "You know what? I'm going to do that just to see where everybody was at." Again, you're not going to touch everybody, guys. You're not going to touch everybody. But at the end of the day, when it was all set and done, from the start of training camp in August to about September, by the time we got ready to start the season, we had guys that didn't want to pray at the end of practice to, starting early September before the Texas Southern game, we had guys fighting. "Oh, Coach, no, let me pray. I want to pray, Coach. I want to pray. I want to pray. I want to pray." And that's how I know at that particular time that, you know, I trusted God to, to, to go His route and let these young men, you know, come to God at their own pace. Again, like I said, God and ladies and gentlemen, they just started, I mean, not fighting, but they started fussing like, "Hey, you know what? I want to say the prayer. I want to say the prayer. I want to say the prayer." And I shed tears that, when I first saw that, that day, I, I, I shed tears. I said, "Wow, God is good. God is good." We ended up having two good six seasons because, again, one, they trusted me as a coach, and they trusted each other as players. And in life, we're going to have to trust one another as well. And again, I keep saying that it starts in the home. It really does, people. Starts in the home. If you can't trust your sibling, you can't trust your mom, your dad, you know, you're going to be a step behind. You're going to be a step behind. There's a whole bunch of lawyers, doctors, athletes out here in this audience today. How are you going to go about doing it? It's all on you. And again, it's how you treat others, how you'd be disciplined about going about it. And I promise you, as I sit here before you, if you put in that work, you put in that discipline, you trust the process of growing up, listening to your parents, as Raph said, listen to your parents or your sibling. I promise you, it's going to take you a long, long way, people. Long way.
So, we're going to take a brief intermission. I'm going to hand it over for us to do a quick exercise.
Good morning. If you in children's ministry, you know better. I said, "Good morning." So we talking about trust. And if you're in children's ministry, you know whose way is better? Whose way is better? So we about to have a contest and see if y'all really believe that. Who believes that God's way is truly better? Gigi, give me Gigi. I need three contestants who are up, and I will tell you, we are going to give a gift card. So if you truly believe that God's way is better and you think you can prove it, come on up here. Come on, London and Winter. All right, this is by audience applause. Okay? So on TikTok, we have a little dance called "Your Way Is Better." If you don't know it, I'll do a brief, don't judge me, but I'll do a brief one. It's up, up, down, down, need to do this little thing here, right? Okay, heart, turn around. But the kids can do it very well. I got a feeling, this is Gigi, y'all can stand right here on the side. So we're going to play the music, "Your Way Is Better." And we're going to have by audience applause. Now, however well you do it, that's how much you really believe that God's way is better. So if you look bored, we not going to believe that you think God's way is better. Go ahead, step over there so they can see. Y'all ready? Give me your purse, London. Y'all ready? Y'all clap them up, clap them up because they got it. Scoot on over. Here we go. We ready, DJ. Scoot on over so they can see. Scoot over. If you know it, you can stand up and do it too. Promise you know it? Come on. Let me put my mic down. Now, I know I just wore them out because I'm from Texas Southern University. So I know I just wore them out, but let's go ahead and applaud. London, give a round of applause. Okay? Winter. Gigi. Coach. All right. So we just wanted y'all to get up. But if you truly believe that God's way is better, let's get some energy. Go ahead and turn it up real quick, just dancing, see, real quick. Real quick, before we go back to our program. Lord, I need you now. Hey. Yeah. Uh-oh, Carter, come on. Oh, 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 oh. Hey, hey, hey. Y'all giving up for our contestants. Y'all all go see right before, he got a gift card for you. Okay. I'm going to turn it back over to you all. We just wanted to get up for a second. But if you believe your way is better, I should have made y'all get up and do it too. I got a feeling. Y'all look like, who said they from Texas Southern? Because I know if you from Texas Southern, I know you got some rhythm. Because, you know, we ain't do nothing without a little jam at TSU. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. So let's keep that energy going. I need to take us back in time to the first Super Bowl that a black quarterback got to lead in. And that, but the team was down 10-0. This happened before. A lot of the room was alive, so y'all have gotten to grow up in the era of Patrick Mahomes, Cam Newton, and all these wonderful black quarterbacks. But it used to only be one in the league. And down 10-0, commentators are already phoning it in because they say that nobody's ever come back from a 10-0 deficit. He throws up a pass, and a lustrous member of the panel, Ricky Sanders, catches the ball for the first touchdown, and then they go on. I think it was a 42-0 run after that. And so, game ended 42-10. And I wanted to ask you, we talked about trust. What does it take to believe in yourself when everything's telling you? All the, the stats in life? All the, the stats in life, all of the background, everything's telling you, you're not about to succeed? And I know that you've experienced that both on the field and off the field. So can you talk to them a little bit about that?
Uh, well, good morning, everybody. Good to see all, everybody with beautiful faces. And one thing I wanted to start out with is, God is good.
All the time.
You know, uh, I grew up with my grandfather. He was my heart. My mother had me when she was 14, so I never met my father. But my grandfather instilled, you know, he was a Baptist preacher and, you know, with the Baptist preachers, you don't get away with nothing. So, uh, uh, it was, it was good growing up with him, cuz I'm in church every, wherever he was, I was on the front view, just looking at him like, oh, man, this guy did that. And, but then somewhere in the act, I got a little cocky, started playing ball, started getting a lot of accolades, a lot of people started clapping for me and this and that. And when I was in high school, I had, man, all kinds of scholarships to play football, basketball, track. And one day at, uh, football practice, one of the coaches wanted me to do something, and I did it. I'm not doing this. I said, and he said, get off my field. So I'm like, I took my stuff off and went inside, cuz I thought that was the man. So I stayed out for about a week, and then the city council people came and talked to me. They said, Rick, no, don't do this. This is your opportunity to do something great in this, in life. So what I wanted to say is, man, I've been through some stuff. I was in juvenile, I, I had some stuff I had to go through in, in juvenile court and all that. So to see a young boy who had a mother that had him at 14 can go to the NFL, win two Super Bowls, have Super Bowl records, I caught 10 catches, 193 yards and two touchdowns in that game, it had to be nobody but God. And I give him all the glory and all, all of it. Because without him, we're nothing. So, young people, keep it going. And I mean, God loves you. You're gonna be great. You're gonna do some things in this world that's gonna amaze people. And I just wanna bless you right now and say, hey, keep it up.
And so I'm gonna throw it over to, uh, Brother Ed Davis. You spent a lot of time seeing, uh, young people who were going through, uh, struggle. What did it take for the people who were able to overcome? What, what was the qualities that made them able to overcome?
First of all, I wanna say, um, most kids try to fit in. They look at different things, how certain individuals, individuals wear their clothes, what they drive, the jewelry they have on, the ladies that they have, all of those things. And they think it's cool. But what's cool is having your own mind. Well, what's cool is making your own decisions. What's cool is respecting your parents. What's cool is knowing right from wrong. And everybody in here knows right from wrong. You know, if the stove is on, and they tell you to cut the stove off, and don't go by it because it's still hot, some of you would try it, simply because you wanna be rebellious. But then when that heat hits you, and it makes you stand up, you're like, I shouldn't have done that. But sometimes in life, you don't have second chances to say, I shouldn't have done that. So that's why you need to take advantage of the stuff that you have now. And life, life always ain't gonna be kind to you. Life always ain't gonna be good to you. You have choices to make in life. You have choices of your friends that you hang around with. Those choices will make or break you. Sometimes you gotta understand that you don't wanna be in a situation to where you say, hang, I shouldn't have done that. You wanna be in situations to where you can walk away from that. I've been in the ugly side of the business for a long time. I've seen things that most people don't understand or wouldn't understand behind these prison walls. And there's levels to all of this stuff. The last group that I talked to, they was juvenile detentions, uh, 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 individuals. And that's a level. You don't wanna graduate to different levels. If you graduate, you wanna graduate from high school to college to business. Those are the things you wanna graduate from. But those other things that's out here in life, that's so tempting. And what I mean by tempting, everything that shines ain't always good. Everything that tastes good ain't always good. At one point or another, you got to understand, you gotta make decisions on your own, and don't let your friends influence you to do things that you're not supposed to do.
And so Brother Moore, you are a successful business owner, multiple businesses, but you didn't start out with a silver spoon in your mouth. You didn't start out in the best of circumstances. What did it take for you to believe in yourself, and why should these young people do the same?
Well, uh, good morning. I am a product of the southwest side of Houston. I graduated from Westbury in 1992, played football, went to college and all those things. I lived in a community called Hill Cross Square back in the days. I don't know what they call it now. But I grew up around lions, tigers, and bats. I lived in Hill Cross Square when the crack epidemic hit center point. It went from birds chirping, grass greens, to gunfire, and I'm in the middle of it. I played football in the drug dealers, killers, murderers, all of that. They said, look, Mike, you can play football, you can't sell drugs. All my friends sold drugs and did whatever, right? One, I knew my mom was gonna whip me if she caught me selling drugs. That's one thing. But my, my purpose was, I saw my mother struggling, and I wanted to do something about it. So I started selling candy in middle school, going to as young an age, pumping gas on Skydive 16 when it was raining, cuz women they like getting outside in their cars, whatever the case is, right? Now, saying all to say this is that it, it wasn't easy, but at the same time, I wasn't clean either. I mean, I got in trouble as a kid, and just so happened that God really guided me into certain things. Even I had the accolades in high school playing football as a running back, went to college in Iowa, played. But one thing I didn't do, and like these other guys did, I wasn't disciplined. I missed that point, right? But God gave me another chance. Okay, just because you didn't do that, let me give you something else. So I ended up transferring from Iowa, going to Prairie View, started a record company called Bell Wade Records. Opened up a record store, opened up a studio down there. Then I got tired of that. Now I'm the proud owner of a seasoning called Mo's Magic Dust, which are in HEBs and Potburn stores, and I'm also the owner of the Stuffed Bacon Factory Restaurants. The main thing you have to do is believe. Use your imagination. When I was coming up with a restaurant, I didn't have the money for that restaurant, but I wrote it on paper every day. I looked at it. I played with it. And I always say, do what you can with what you got, and what you need will find you. I took a $200 barbecue pit from Sam's, and I started catering, doing ribs. And next thing you know, I saved my money, got a bigger pit, and next thing you know, things started happening. It's called the law of attraction. And the other thing too is stay away from your bad friends. Now, I talk to them on the phone every once in a while, but when they say, hey, we over here in Greenhouse Patio, or whatever they call it now, we over here have some beers, I always say, man, I got caught up at the restaurant. Cuz I know what happens. You go back into the environment that you come from, and it feels good. One day, turn to two, turn, turn to four, four, turn to seven, and now you're not focused on what you need to be focused on. With all that being said, kids, I'm telling you, it's really simple. Write down your goals, look at them every day, avoid those traps. I have, I had friends that didn't like me. They were friends. I told one guy, man, I'm gonna start a pickle company. This is back in 2004. Man, you don't wanna do no pickles. And guess what? I listened to him. Here it is, 2025, I started a pickle company. Thank you.
All right, so before I ask the next question, I want, uh, if you have questions of anybody on the panel or the panel as a whole, can you start lining up in the center? And after this question, we're gonna start taking questions from the audience. And so, uh, definitely come on down. The last of my pre-prepared questions is going to, uh, Brother Vernon Dean. We heard a lot from Brother Moore about, uh, the need to basically have a good team around you. And as somebody who not only played professionally, but has been a coach for many years, you know a lot of what it takes, uh, to, to get a group, good group of people together. And I just wanted you to talk to the young people a little bit about when or how they need to decide when it's time to cut off some of those connections that are not serving them well.
Uh, great question. Uh, Bubba McDowell says something that's true to my heart. The first thing, from a philosophical point of view, coaching, you gotta have trust. After trust, it's gotta be commitment. You gotta be committed to something. Thirdly, you gotta care, which is respect. And the last one, you gotta have passion. And you can take those four things throughout life with you, with, with whatever you do. So in my room, and the first thing I always gotta make sure of is I can trust the guys that are in my room. And I gotta trust that they can take the teaching. And so as a parent, as a parent with my kids, how I raised them, when they left, I always knew that they would say, what would my dad think? Before you, before you make a decision, I always ask yourself, what would my mom say? What would my dad say? And see, that's the teaching that takes place in the house. So you gotta trust what you're teaching. But not, not only do you trust what you're teaching, you gotta be committed to it. But the kids also have to be committed to what you're teaching. So i- is there a check and balance, you know? Well, you can tell if your kid go to school and he acting up, something wrong, something wrong. See, back when we were growing up, it was called a hard hand of discipline. It was a hard hand, you know? So you can't do that anymore, but, but, you know, from a mind standpoint, just take something away from it. You know, cuz see, once privileges are taken away from you, like Judge Gray said, hey, you get in front of her, you talking from six months to life. Six months to life, you know? So, so me, you know, as far as coaching and as far as playing, he asked me a question last week, well, I think it was two weeks ago, about playing corner. I played corner, so Bubba and I played the same position. By the way, first Super Bowl with me, second Super Bowl with me, those were my teammates. Those were my teammates. So I trusted him then, and I trusted him. He asked Ricky about when we were down like 10-0. But I was on that defense that gave us those 10 points. You know, and I was also on, on the kickoff team, we fumbled the ball when they scored. So you know, had we gave, given that up, they would've been what, on our 17-yard line? We could've been down 17-0. But we trust the process, cuz there's always a process when you're trying to teach somebody. So you gotta trust that process and believe in that process. And kids, remember this, self-discipline over self-satisfaction. Remember that. Self-discipline over self-satisfaction. And you can take that wherever you go in your life. And this is the last thing I'm gonna say. My dad used to always say, the secret of success in life is being prepared when the opportunity knock. Are you prepared?
So do we have any questions from the audience? Go for it.
Greetings, how y'all doing? Um, I don't have so much, well, I have a question in one sense. So my name is Boosie Peters-Moore, and I'm originally from the Boogie Down Bronx, both places of hip-hop. I came here in 1983, the day after Hurricane Alicia, to go to TSU. That's what brought me to Houston. Since the time, I'm an educator, and I'm also the founder of a 501(c)(3) called WU. Like to exhale, woo, whatever you need to exhale. It's an acronym for Women Healing and Empowering Women. It is an arts healing reentry program. I don't know if everybody in here is familiar with the term reentry, but the term reentry is a term used for returning citizens from incarceration. I see there's all these men up here talking, and I'm new to this church. I'm not familiar with this church. I just happened to hear promotions on the radio, on my radio, our school radio station, about this event. Our organization is addressing how women have been going to prison. How at one point, we have been, our women outpacing our men going to prison, largely due to the intersectionality of being unhoused, as well as domestic violence, and really shining a light on the issue around molestation, rape, and incest. We're not taking enough of a time to use these teachable moments with the sexual abuses going on, that this country was built on. It was built on the rape of our ancestors, that the Middle Passage was the first sex and labor trafficking ring, that there were sex farms, that there were breeding farms. Some of you said that y'all were incarcerated. We know how rampant sexual abuse is in the prisons. We know what's going on right now with P. Diddy and Epstein's files and all these things. And we're not having enough of our men that are supporting the work like that our organization is doing. I'm looking for some brothers up here right now to help with our organization around addressing these issues and our sexual abuse, because we're quick to talk about sexual abuse when it comes to our women, as though it doesn't happen to our men. It happens to our men and our boys too. And in a patriarchal society in which we live in, it makes it hard for men and boys to talk about these issues. One of the ways that it plays out for our boys in sexual abuse is such is a lot of our young men and boys, the way that they lost their virginity was because they were being told that you're not a man if you're not, if you're not having sex, right?
I do want us to make sure we're asking a question.
So that's the question that I'm asking. Like, I wanna know, how many of you are doing, working around that? Are you willing to partner with an organization like ourselves that's addressing these kinda issues? Because it's very important that we create safe spaces for our boys and our men who are dealing with the issue around sexual abuse, whether they're predators or being preyed on.
I, I can, I can answer the question in a sense. I have a sister that's did five years in prison, then did eight years in prison, and now doing 25 years in prison. And her situation wasn't about sexualities, uh, sex, it's mental health as well. And I think that the, the thing is that we have to realize that in our communities, there's a lot of mental issues going on that we don't know, because we're living in a community and we thinking that's a norm. Until you step outside your environment, and you start saying, hey, man, this ain't how it's supposed to be. You know, but the, the main thing is, I would be more interested to hear what you, what you have to say. I can't say I can get involved in it or not, whatever the case is, but I could, I may have resources, people that you could speak with. So thank you.
I'd, I'd also like to thank you for being here and like to talk to you afterwards. We do address women in our program called "The Next Chapter." We are inside behind the walls. And so you said you were new here. We recognize that, and not only that, we have an outstanding woman entrepreneur who will talk to the girls today. So we brought our full game plan, and we'd like to talk to you. Thank you for the question.
Oh, any other questions from the audience? And I do wanna double check and make sure, uh, that any of the young people get first dibs, cuz we're running a long time. Okay, so go ahead, and then followed by you. Okay, we'll go first, and then we'll bring the mic over here.
Uh, how y'all doing? I'm Michaela Barnes, also Prairie View and A&amp;M grad. So, um, I just wanna ask, cuz we hear a lot about, um, young children and adults, but it's not a lot of people speaking for that young adult, that 20 to 25 to 30, we struggling right now. We trying to get it out the mud for the things our parents didn't give to us, or not to blame them. They only learning, right? But what advice can y'all give that middle age to, yes, you couldn't get it from when you were six, but you can still get it at 24? We not hearing that a lot. We need that. We need that. Because we feeling like it's nowhere to go. What we have all the time in the world is not over yet. I know, I understand that, but it might be some people in here that don't understand that. And we need y'all for that too.
I wanna speak on that a little bit. That age group is very vital right now. That age group is, it's hard to explain them. They, they wanna be individuals, and they wanna think on their own. But I also lean back on, you know, the parents. At one point or another, you have to listen to your parents. I have kids now that's, um, I have a son that's 30, and I have a daughter that's 26. And seems like I can't reach them sometimes because they know everything. So when people that's older than you can sit down and talk to you, believe me, they've, they've, they've had experiences just like you. In other words, the game don't change, faces do. So the stuff that you, that you're going through, have, people have already been through that. So don't think that your parents and people that's older than you can't give you sound advice. That age group that you're talking about, they lean on each other for advice. That's where they get their advice from, and they get their advice from social media. I felt all of that pain. I felt all that frustration when you were just talking. I felt that. But you got to understand, you gotta break your cycle of where you're at sometime. You gotta get comfortable of being uncomfortable. What I mean by that, you gotta put yourself in situations to where you can learn. If you still in that same circle, and that circle ain't moving nowhere, you need to get out of that circle. you need to get out of that circle. I would like to say, also, I didn't find, when I transferred to Prairie View, I played one game and they found out I was in the L's, but I didn't know what I was gonna do. I didn't find my traction until I was twenty-seven, when I started a record company. The point is, is this. Find you some mentors. I have three mentors. And when they speak, I listen. And the other thing, too, is, there's a book called "The Magic" by Run the Burn. There's other books you can read. But "The Magic," what it does is unplug you and basically plugs you back in after thirty days. Read books that are outside of the school norms. The books that they would never tell you to read, those are the books that you need to read. And finally, as you say about the circle, get around people that's moving. And that's gonna be the way that's gonna make things happen in your life. And just don't get down on yourself. Just do what you have to do until you find that position. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna turn it over for our last question.
The book is called "The Magic" by Run the Burn. It's a thirty-day book. You're gonna read something, you're gonna do something every day. And basically, what it teaches about is being grateful and having gratitude towards anything and everything in life. And basically, when you finish reading this book, it's gonna just open your eyes to a whole different way of world. It's called "The Magic" by Run the Burn.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
My, my question is, is there anybody here that can address, to the young people, the dangers, the dangers of the internet? What you put out on the internet, any question you ask, stays with you for life. It is always there. Please speak to these kids on the dangers of the internet. It's good for some things. But it's a whole lot of dangers.
I'm sorry. I'm on social media all the time. And I studied, for the most part, ten years studying social media, which I call "human behavior." We kinda laugh about it. Back in the days, we used to go to this place, the thing they call the Kappa Beach Party. And we sit back and thought, like, man, I'm so glad we didn't have cameras back then. You know? Because, once you do something and put that impression on any social media platform, even though you may erase it, somebody got it. And someone may use that for you, you know? So, even to myself, being in business, I have to be careful what I say and how I move on social media. Because, again, it's there forever. You may not see it, think you deleted it or edited it. Only you can see it, whatever the case may be. So, don't live your life on the social media. I just can say that because it will someday come back and haunt you.
Let me ask, a quick question. How many of you, young or old, doesn't matter, plan on pursuing some type of sports, professional? Or if you wanted to go there? I mean, if you wanna go to the highest level, show of hands, how many? If you put something bad out on that internet, you're done. 'Cause what the NFL does now, they're not worried about so much of how much you can do for as athletic ability. It comes down to character. It comes down to character. So, I'm forewarning you, if you put it out there, these guys got FBI, they got CIA, they pull up everything from your childhood. Once you get good enough to be looked at and drafted to the next level, now they wanna know, what has this kid done? Him or her done in their past? Is this person gonna hurt our organization? And if you got something bad out there, it's gonna hurt your chances of being drafted higher than you probably should have. So, think about this before you put it out there. I always tell my guys now, like, as a coach, you know, we have a team at PV or at all these colleges now where they monitor these guys, these kids' social media account. Just make sure that they're not out there doing something they're not supposed to do. Because once it's out there, it is out there.
Well, thank you so much.
Can I quickly add something to that? I wasn't always a judge. I've been a defense attorney and a prosecutor. Particularly as a prosecutor, I cannot tell you how many times we file charges against a person. We have what we think as evidence, and all it takes is a quick search of social media, and we end up with an even more airtight case that you, the person charged, has given us against you. And a lot of times, it's innocent stuff hanging out with your buddies who might have guns and might be throwing up their fingers a certain way. And it's innocent in that moment, but then, when it gets into a prosecutor's hands, it turns into evidence. And evidence that strong turns into years. And you heard Judge Gray say earlier, "Six months to ninety-nine years or life possible death." So, how would, I often wonder, how does that defendant feel sitting there, in that chair, in front of a judge, jury sitting over there, and the evidence that is being used against you, you gave to the state? So, it seems fun. It seems like it's the popular thing to do, but you have got to be extra careful what you put on social media yourself and what you let those you hang out with put about you or with you on social media.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Campbell. I'm a thirty-four-year retired Master Chief, United States Navy. I'm a member of this church. I would like the panel, if you guys can explain to the youth the importance of the offseason, right? You guys go into NFL, you know, you, it's very important that they understand how to use their summers. You guys are coming off your offseason now, getting ready to go back to school. Are you prepared for the next grade level? Are you prepared for the next higher education level? Have you used your time wisely in the summer? That's gonna make you even successful the next school year. Will make it easier. So, you know, if you wanna be on ESPN, it depends on what you do in the summertime. That's gonna put you on the highlight reel. So, it's very important that you use your time wisely and not let time robbers your friends, the internet, and everybody else to track you from your goals.
I'll speak first. In nineteen eighty-nine, I think that was the last year, Strahan was at Westbury. Well, they lost all their games that year. And what I did was, during the offseason, which we call summertime now, what we would do is, we would make sure that everybody was at football, in the weight room, that morning, and then evening, have to be on the football field. Coaches didn't tell us to do this, we did it ourselves. And if you didn't come to those trainings, those sessions in the summertime, we kicked y'all to the football field. Because we wanted to change the culture at Westbury back then. So, we took the initiative ourselves. We don't need coaches, "Y'all need to be out, no, we going ourselves." So, it's very important. And in that year, we ended up going to the playoffs, which they had a signed T-shirts card from Oblivion to the playoffs. 'Cause we just changed the whole culture by working on our own.
Brother Dean, how about you tackle that one, just briefly? Yeah, you go ahead.
Real quick, in professional sports, there's no offseason. None. None. Because if you, if you wanna be the best, you gotta be the best. You know, and you gotta understand, you know, can anybody tell me the enemy to great? Anybody? Good. You absolutely right. Because most people, when they see, "Oh, yeah, I'm good now." You know, so you limit yourself. So, you gotta always search for your greatness. See, my greatness is not his greatness, it's my greatness. So, you gotta always search for it. And then, so what that means is, you have to prepare better than the next guy. 'Cause, trust me, in NFL, the difference between the players is so small. So small. So, the elite guys, you know what they do? Take care of their bodies. So, in offseason, or like the gentleman said, when you're in school in the summertime, before you go to the next class, you gotta take care of your mind. Prepare your mind to do something great.
From my academic perspective, I know it's very popular right now for, in your senior year of high school, for you to take drastically reduced schedules and maybe not take a math or science class that final year. Understand that that puts you way behind by the time you get to college. So, think about, when you're talking about those off-seasons, it's not just about the summer. It's about making sure you don't take too much time off in your progression. Because I know a lot of people, maybe y'all aren't interested in being professional athletes, but you need to be professional in something. And a lot of times, that pathway is going to involve college. And if you're talking about being a professional athlete, understand, all of the professional athletes on this panel have a college degree because it's a requirement. So, make sure that you're prioritizing those academics, even when you don't have to, putting in that extra work. Because the difference between the best and the people who are okay, and that oftentimes is the difference between you making a lot of money versus you making some okay money, is very small. So, we're gonna wrap up the panel here, and I'm gonna transition. So, I wanna make sure that we thank our panelists for all of the information they gave us. So, and I don't know if y'all wanna sit up here, y'all can go to the audience if you want. Oh, they wanna sit for pictures. So, I have the privilege of introducing our next speaker. We wanted to make sure to give her her own time because we recognize that, as was pointed out earlier, this might be a male-centric panel, but we wanna make sure our women are getting something spectacular as well. And to that end, I get to introduce Sharice Slate. Ms. Slate, for those of you who don't know her, you definitely know her work. She has, is a hairstylist and stylist to some of the biggest names in Hollywood and athletics. You have seen her work in over a hundred and fifty shows and movies. Most of which you turn on on Netflix, on Hulu. You're gonna find some work that she's done. And she's been instrumental in changing the culture of how people perceive black hair. You know, if you go look at some of the older shows, you see the people used to be a little busted 'cause the hairstylists didn't know what they were doing. And so, she is not only somebody who is successful, an entrepreneur, she's somebody who has moved the culture. And she's here to talk to you a bit about what it takes to be successful and to aspire beyond what people expect of you.
Thank you for having me. I'm excited to be here, but I like to feel like I'm here with my family, so I'm gonna keep it real cozy. Hi, everybody! Okay, that's better. So, I'm gonna tell you how I'm connected a little bit with the NFL. But I wanna let you guys know that it's possible. I came from Detroit, Michigan, and I came from what I like to call humble beginnings. So, I'm gonna tell you guys, I'm a project chick. I'm gonna tell you how I really, really got started from working on shows like Yellowstone, CSI, Landman. Gosh, I done worked on a lot of different stuff. Working with different artists like Ciara and Ashanti, some people that you guys might know. But I came from the projects. And it was kinda hard sometimes. I was poor and didn't even know I was poor. But I wanna let you guys know, if it was possible for me, it was possible for you. I did my very first haircut when I was six years old. I gave my brother that famous Dalmatian dog haircut. I cut patches all over his head. I did get a whooping, but it didn't stop me. But I wanted to see my name roll down in the credits of the movies. How many of you guys stayed behind and watched the credits roll down? I was that kid. I was like, you know what? This is something that I wanna do. I was a kid doing French braids on everybody in the neighborhood and doing their hair. And I was like, this is something that I really wanna do. So, I remember, you know, going along, doing everybody's hair. And then, I ran into a roadblock. I was kinda quiet, kinda shy, thought I was too tall, feet was too big. I'm still tall, my feet big. But I knew it was something that I wanted to do. And then, I end up getting pregnant when I was about nineteen. And I remember my mom telling me, my life was over. And I remember digging down deep inside, saying, you know what? I'm gonna prove my mom wrong. I'm gonna make her into a liar. So, I went to college, Wayne State University. And while I went for computer programming, and college was great, but I always wanted to do hair and see my name roll down in the credits. So, I went to cosmetology school. Went there, graduated from cosmetology school. Went to my first salon, worked there for about a year and a half, built up a big clientele. And I remember one day, me and my little boy, he was three years old at the time, we were, I'm on my way to taking the work, and I decided, you know what? I think this is gonna be my last day. Now, my boss at the time, he was the type of guy, if you gave him two weeks' notice, he would fire you on the spot. So, I said, you know what? I think it's time for me to go to a next level. I was one of those type of people who believed in faith walks. And I didn't even understand my walk at the time, but I was taking faith walks. So, I said, you know what? I was on my, talking myself into this at this time, okay? I said, you know what? I think I'm gonna quit today. Yeah, I think I'm gonna quit. Yeah, I think I'm gonna quit today. So, I decided, I get there, I go into his office, and I says, you know what, Van? Today is gonna be my last day. So, he said, he was a little arrogant, if I could be honest. He said, you know what? Okay. So, I walk over to my station. He comes over to me. He says, "Oh, you'll be back." I put my hand on my hips, my head turned like the Exorcist. I said, "I will not." So, I'm terrified, okay? So, I'm making real good money at the time, at least I thought it was. So, I had built up about eighty clients. And about six months, I decided to leave and go where we call the Boot Frontal Salon. I go to the salon, I double my money in about a week. I was like, okay, I'm doing pretty good. Then I leave there, stay there for about a year and a half, opened up my very first salon. And at the time, I was terrified, took another faith walk, nervous. And I said, okay. So, at that time, I started doing, and Detroit, Detroit is kind of a clique of city. So, I started putting my name out there, and I started doing a lot of different players' wives, a lot of NFL players' wives. And so, I end up meeting one young lady. We decided to go to a concert together. Our birthdays was two days apart. As we're walking across the street, remember, my mind is still on my prize. I wanna work in the entertainment industry, and I wanna see my name roll down in the credits. I never took my mind off of what I really wanted to do. That was always in my head. But I also believed in checking off things off my list. If I wanted something, I would always check it off as I went. I went from working in a salon, check, to owning my own salon, check. And then, now, I wanted to work in entertainment industry, but that was my ultimate goal. So, then I decided, as we're going across the street, she was from Brooklyn, New York. She so happened to see one of her friends who was working in the music industry. He was the road manager for Puffy, for a lot of groups. I'm dating myself back to Salt and Pepper, Kid 'n Play, Heavy D, all these different people. So, I'm super excited, right? So, I said, oh, this is my opportunity to get into the business. So, he said, why don't you come to the hotel after the concert, and then we'll, you know, exchange numbers? I'm not thinking about this concert, right? All I can think about is getting to the hotel. So, we go back to the hotel. He gives me his number, he says, "Give me a call." I call him, he blows me off. I call him, he blows me off. I call him for two years. Two years. Finally, he says, "I'm gonna give you a shot." So, he gives me a shot. I fly out to New York on my own dime. 'Cause when you believe in yourself, when you invest in your career, it will pay you back. If I don't tell you nothing else that you get, just remember that part. So, I end up doing this video, this group called Intro. And after I did that video, he says, you know, I know a young lady, And after I did that video, he says, you know, I know a young lady, I think she's gonna blow up, she had a deal, didn't work out so well, she had never had a haircut, she had never been to a salon. He brings her over, I do her a haircut, and you guys know that lady today as Ashanti. I got a chance to travel all over the world with her, and I became her hairstylist and her makeup artist. So I'm telling you this story to let you guys know that if you believe in yourself, you fight hard enough, you can do anything that you wanna do. And that door opened up, one door, then I got a chance, they saw me on, um, American Music Awards, and then Ciara's people reached out to me, and that door opened up another door. So connections will continue to open up doors. You are the core of the five people that you hang around. So if you hang around the right people, connect with the right people, the doors will start opening up. But you have to believe in yourself. I told you guys, I had low self-esteem, but I fought through it. If you keep fighting through it and connect with the right people, you can have whatever you want in life. All right? Thank you.
All right, so, oh, don't forget your phone. All right, so, uh, our next speaker, and then we're gonna, she's gonna give you the instructions on the breakout sessions that are gonna be happening in some of the classrooms. Um, next speaker I'm very proud to introduce, because she's my mom, but, uh, before she was my mom, she was a young lady growing up in a small town, single-parent household, uh, financial difficulties, and a lot of bullying and a lot of setbacks. Uh, that did not stop her from going off and doing what people said she couldn't do. She got a, uh, engineering degree, mechanical engineering degree from U of H, got a master's in business from U T D, and finally got a PhD in engineering from Texas A&amp;M. She's traveled the world, she's worked with multiple Fortune 500 companies in her consulting business, and is now a professor at Texas A&amp;M. And I'm gonna let her come up and tell a bit about her story and what that means for perseverance.
To God be the glory. Uh, I want to be brief, but hopefully impactful. What I want to leave with everyone here is two words: you can. See, growing up, people told me what I couldn't do, but I want you to know, you can. I was fifteen years old when I got pregnant. I've told some of the members of the church, I had to go before the church, this was old school, and I had to apologize to the church and repent publicly, because that's what they made me do. Although, by the way, the guy went to the same church and they never made him come up. So I understood the sentiment of the young lady, that yes, a lot of things women have to go through. In fact, a lot of things we in black culture have to endure, but that doesn't change the message. You can. You really, really can. Because even though they continued to tell me what I couldn't do, even though they ostracized me, even though they told me, look at her, she thought she was gonna be some, just 'cause she made good grades, it didn't matter. And sometimes it was family, sometimes it was neighbors, but at the end of the day, because I looked at one scripture, that was when I learned that I could do all things through Christ who strengthened me. You really can. I had low confidence, you're right, I endured molestation, we endured a lot of mental illness that was surrounding me, poverty that was surrounding me. The story is deep, but it doesn't matter where you came from. I don't spend so much time with yesterday, because I want everyone to look at your tomorrow. And so, everybody that came in, you received this document, really well wrote out, it gives you a place to write your plan. You've been hearing all of the panel, everyone that spoke, we had a plan. Well, I would love to think that I had a grand plan. I only had one objective, and that was, I didn't want my son to be hungry. I didn't wanna live in poverty. I didn't have a grand plan, but they told me, oh, that thing called engineering, because you know how to do math and science, that'll help you get a good paycheck. Oh, okay, I can. I can, because my motivation was important. So ask yourself, what is your motivation? 'Cause if it's only a paycheck, it might not be good enough. That's why people go to different kinds of choices if it's for not enough of a compelling why. My son not being hungry, my children having options, that was a real compelling why to me to not quit. You can, the caveat is, only if you don't quit. So yes, you need a plan, and you need to persevere through it all. I had to keep going, it didn't matter what they called me. They called me literally everything but a child of God. Do you know what they call me now? Doctor. 'Cause I earned it. Only with the help of the Lord, because what I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me. So what I encourage all of you, for the remainder of this time that you have, with all of these phenomenal people who did, because at some point, they believed they could. Because you gotta believe it, you're the one that's gonna have to put the work in. You're the one that's gonna have to persevere regardless of what they say. In college, last quick story, I finally got up enough courage to go ask for help. I was taking a class called thermodynamics, I didn't even know how to pronounce it. And I went to my professor and said, you know, I'm just not getting it. Do you know what this professor told me? He looked me in my face and said, ma'am, as he closed my book and gave me no help, you need to reconsider your career objectives, because you're just not engineering material. I have a PhD in engineering. You can. It doesn't matter what other people say about you. So I hope that starting today, you're gonna begin to speak positively about yourself. So we're gonna end with an exercise after I give you instructions. So, we have an illustrious panel here, and we're gonna break out. We're gonna let the men talk about fatherhood, there are people here that are able to talk about fitness, we're gonna go upstairs and talk about education in room 207, talk about motherhood and planning, being whole within ourselves, as well as with our children and goal-setting in room 210. And we're only gonna talk for about thirty minutes, then we're gonna come back here in this room, we have some wonderful raffles, they're gonna raffle off a football signed by these awesome gentlemen. We're gonna even give you lunch. But what I want you to do in the meantime, because you'll get chances then to take pictures with all the NFL players, we're going to do an exercise, have some closing words by a few people, but in the back of your mind, start thinking about, who else do I wanna network with? See, we showed up here to offer ourselves as part of your village. God definitely gets all the glory for all that I've been able to accomplish. You heard them all testify the same. But we also had somebody, somebody. Hopefully it's in your home, but I'm realistic. If it's not in your home, if it's not in your community, as of today, nobody has an excuse. Because we're here offering ourselves as part of your village. So decide who you're gonna network with, which of those huddles, as we call them, you wanna go to, and know that we are so sincere, we will follow up with you to do our part, but we can't substitute for your part. You have to drive your own train. All right? And so, one quick thing, everybody stand up, a lot of people been talking, this takes a whole thirty seconds. In case you didn't know, we're looking at awesomeness. Every one of you are great. You are great. So think of one great attribute about yourself, one great attribute, irrefutable, you're good, 'cause you gotta know what you're working with. I want everybody, raise your right hand, as far as you can, I encourage everybody to do it. Reach way back and pat yourself on the back. Didn't that feel good? Yes, you may be seated, what we want you to walk away with is knowing that if other people don't pat you on the back, you can pat yourself on the back. You have to know when you've done a great job, so give yourself a hand. We truly love you with the love of the Lord.
Before we break into the huddles, we're gonna have, uh, can I have the microphone? We're gonna invite, uh, Dr. Hill from Bethel's Family to please come up and, and share a few words, and I think we...
Good afternoon, everyone. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I wake y'all up? Well, I wanna let you know that I am just excited about you being here today. I am excited, uh, of all that we've seen and heard thus far, I am excited to be amongst all the stars, those of you who are sitting out there, and those who sit on the stage behind me. I am excited about the potential that each and every one of us holds as we move our lives to the next phase. But what I'd like to do before we move into our huddles, I'd like to acknowledge the people that we had at the vendor tables behind us. So if you'll just give me a minute, I'll pull it up on my phone. We had the Houston Partnership for Success and, uh, Bethel's Global Reach, we have that table, wave your hands back there. Okay, we do have, uh, our, our executive director, Pastor Craig Taylor, he's with us also, he, he is over missions for Bethel's Global Reach. If any of you are interested in, uh, participating in foreign missions, we have foreign and domestic missions that go forth through Bethel's Global Reach. With regard to our grants, we also have, uh, um, grants that address youth substance abuse and substance prevention. So we are encouraging each and every one of you to please stop by that table. We want you to know that, that there are a lot of resources, uh, for you. Life is going to deal you a lot of distractions as you go. And the young lady who spoke so passionately early about, uh, when you get to age twenty-four and you, you're struggling with how to connect or how to stay connected and, and who to connect with, and you're not really sure if you wanna listen to your parents, there are other resources out there that you can definitely, uh, follow, and so please know that we are here and available to you. We operate out of two grants, one is using Partnership for Success, and the other is our drug-free grant, uh, which is called our Bethel's Community Coalition. So we do operate, uh, out of those two venues as well. We have also, uh, Bethel's Family Christian Academy, which was back in the back. Come on, wave your hands for Bethel's Family Christian Academy, that's how our children get their foundation. And it's not just a spiritual foundation, it's an educational foundation as well. So we, we wanna, uh, shout out to Bethel's Family Christian Academy. We also have Bethel's Family Hannah's Baby. I know you're back there, I see you waving your hands. Hannah's Baby caters to, uh, parents, uh, who have children ages zero to eight years of age. They also have a, a, um, back-to-school fair for the ages zero, eight through eight years of age, and that, that back, that back-to-school fair is coming up on August the twenty-fourth. I wanted to make sure that I got it right. Okay, and then we also have, uh, Bethel's Family Children of Faith Drill Team, I see you back there. And I'm telling you, they put the drill in teams, so you, you need to know, if you wanna be connected to something, or if you want your children to be connected to something, please look up Sister Alva Hinton, because, uh, the drill team is doing some things, they are going places. We also have, um, Bethel's Family Children and Youth Ministry at the back. You see Brother Whitney, I mean Sister Whitney, Brother Eli, and Brother, uh, Washington back there waving their hands? That's our Children and Youth Ministry, so please, please, please remember to stop by that table. We also have Bethel's Family Connect Ministry in the house. Now, this particular ministry is designed for those of you who are going to college. We have care packages back there for you to take with you, just a little something to get you started on your journey. I, I had one student to come by, and he, he looked at all the things that they gave him, he was like, ooh, this is a lot, I just don't know if the chips are gonna last the whole year. I told him, just come back for a refill, how about that? Okay? So please, that's Bethel's Family Connect Ministry. Then we also have the BU Saints Track Cheer Football and Boxing. They are in the back, wave your hands back there. We also have the Boy Scouts in the back. Do you hear me? Can you see me? They are back there. We also have a, a gentleman by the name of BJ, he is from Maestro's Barber College, he is giving free haircuts right now, if you wanna do that. Isn't that something to be excited about? I think it is. We also have the, um, ambassadors of the Evers Academy for African-American males, where are you? They are waving their hands, you see those beautiful ladies back there waving their hands? Please remember, stop by that table, ambassadors for, of the Evers Academy for African-American males. Then, uh, we have, uh, Marva Raspberry with the Youth Leadership Institute from Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Alpha Kappa Omega Chapter, they are in the house. You see that pink and green? Don't you love it? But guess what? Their blood is red, like, man, okay, I'm just saying. And next we have, uh, Marissa Moore with the Girl Scouts, where are you, Miss Marissa? All right, she's waving her hand back there. Can you see her? So ladies, if you wanna connect your, your young ladies to something, Girl Scouts is a good place to, to take them. Then we also have, uh, Brother Jamal Roberts back there for the Boy Scouts. Wave your hand, is he back there? I see him, you see him? Connect the children to the, to the Boy Scouts as well. We want to make sure that you know that all of these particular resources are available to you, please stop by their table. Please also remember, we have basketball back there too, is that BU Saint basketball? I believe it is. BU Saints basketball is in the house. Amen? Amen? So guess what? Knowing that we have all of these things, there is, there are so many opportunities for us to connect our youth, to connect our children. There's a lot for us to do, but we do have to point them in the right direction, because we are the parents, we're part of that village, so we need to make sure that we are able to do that for them. Just as the NFL player said, you know, life is choice-driven, you have to make sure you stay the course, you cannot get distracted by all of the things that, that life will throw in your path. But please also know that whatever you do, when you, when you are grounded and rooted in God's Word, guess what? He's going to show up for you every single time, not just on Monday, not just on Tuesday, not just on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday, not just on Sunday. He will show up for you every single day of the week, but you have to call on Him. You have to trust Him. You have to know that He's going to do all that He said He would do just for you. Amen? Amen, amen. So with that said, okay, we do also have the National Association of University Women, where are you? Woo, woo! Okay. Now, I wanna thank the NFL players for their, for their contribution, they are going to be in our huddle sessions, which would, will follow. Um, please know that, that they are here on behalf of the NFL Players Association and the NFL Players Alumni Association, both from Houston chapters, so please know that. We do also have a back-to-school fair, which is coming up on August the ninth at Marion Park. There is a flyer, it looks like this, there's a flyer in the back, so, uh, we are encouraging children and parents of all ages to come to this particular, um, back-to-school fair as well. Now, I know I said a mouthful, but guess what? We're getting ready to, to move into our huddle sessions, so I'm going to tell you exactly where those sessions are. Um, in room 207, 208, we have our Education Huddle. In room 209 to 10, we have our Motherhood Huddle. In room 122, we have our Fitness Huddle. In room 124, we have our Fatherhood Huddle. And then in this particular room, we have our Entrepreneurship Huddle. Now, what we're going to try to do, we're going to try to divide you into groups, so that we can make sure that everyone goes to the huddle of their choice. And, um, Judge Gray is going to come forth, and Jason Medlock, and we're gonna, we're gonna move forth in that particular venture. Uh, this fly, you know, there's a fly right here, and I know they like honey. I'm just saying. Okay, so what we're going to do, we're going to, um, we're going to come back at one o'clock, but I wanna make sure that we go with the people that, that have been assigned to these particular huddles. So I'm gonna give this back to Dr. Wickler and, and give her an opportunity to speak to you one more time.
Okay, very briefly, you heard what the five huddles are. When you signed in, you should have gotten this document. If you didn't, just grab one from the table there and take it with you, it's something that you'll continue to work on, but we'll talk about in our huddles. So I'll be in the Motherhood Huddle, Dr. Courtney Wickler will be in the Education Huddle, I'll be in 210, and he'll be in 207, okay? We're asking for the NFL players to assist. We have the Entrepreneurial Huddle that will be here with Miss Sharice and Mr. Teagues and Mr. Mo, as well as the Fitness and the Fatherhood Huddle. We'd like all of the NFL players to, uh, divide those up and to be available. So once again, let's break. Time for huddle, be back in here at 1:00 PM, 1:00 PM for lunch and for wrap-up, where you'll get raffle.
If, if any one of you has received a raffle ticket, if you have not received a raffle ticket, I'd like for you to see Miss Claudette right here, if you have not received a raffle ticket, Miss Claudette right here in the, in the, uh, brown, uh, sweatsuit with the, with the white stripe down, please see her to get a raffle ticket.
Go, go ahead. Hey, baby.
He can sit with you. Yes, he can, he sure can. He sure can, he can sit wherever you want him to be.
Okay, please remember again, the Education, uh, Huddle is in room 207. Anyone who needs assistance, uh, going to the room 207, it's on the second floor. Uh, Brother Eli can assist you, and Brother, Sister Kristen James Cunningham Galloway can assist you also. We also have the Motherhood Huddle, which is in room 209. The Fitness Huddle, which is in, uh, room 124, no, 122... The Fitness Huddle, which is in room 124, no, 122. The Fatherhood Huddle, which is in room 124. And the Entrepreneurship Huddle, which is in this room. Please do not leave, we have lunch after the huddles. Okay, and we're asking you to please exit to my right, your left. Do not go out the back doors to go around because we have someone being interviewed. Again, if you can exit to my right, your left, go out the back doors, the side door here. On the side where room 122 and 124 are, please do that and do not exit the back doors. Thank you.
Hey darling, hey. I will, which one is the fitness?
The fitness is 122. It's out this door, go past the restrooms, it's gonna be right there to the right.
I'm staying in entrepreneur, you know where I'm gonna be at.
Can you just take me?
I'll take you down there. But I cannot wait for an opportunity this, today.